Commissioners, we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join us in a moment of silence as we think about our military forces that are representing us overseas and are going in harm's way. And in addition to that, I'd like to think about a high school classmate of mine that passed away within the last couple of days. Frank Campanella became the executive vice president of Boston College and was responsible for a lot of the building. And I remember him from when we were both kids together back over fifty years ago. So I think it's a great loss. So I hope you'll join me in thinking about that Frank Campanella's of the world and say a prayer for him.
And to include those in the Tucson.
Oh, he is. How can we forget that?
Tragedy.
So tragic, so tragic. But there is good news there that Gabriel is improving and let's hope for her continuing her improvement. Yeah, something like that. Thank you. We'll begin with the -- we have our open meeting and on public comment, I've been concerned about matters with regard to agenda and I've suggested some agenda topics going forward, which I have sent -- I think I have some copies here that I can share with you. I'd like to think that as we go forward, we would -- yeah, here you have. Lance, Lamrow sent me an email telling me that he's trying to organize a visit from Congressman Keating for February 2nd. So I think that, you know, we could put that on the agenda for February 2nd and if he doesn't show up, we can cancel it. Other items that I'd like to propose.
Well, hold on.
It's a budget.
We have budget stuff on February 2nd. I mean, we certainly can work around the congressman, but.
It was suggested for three o'clock in the afternoon.
Oh, that'll be work. That's perfect.
Yeah, okay. I should have mentioned it first. I know how you jealously guard.
Well, we just -- we lost a week, so that week got shoved to February 2nd last week. That's when we put that in, so.
Also, at some point, I think we need to look beyond SEDS with regard to Open State, Open Cape rather. And I think we need to get Dan Gallagher in here to find out exactly what's going on.
Well, I had an email yesterday and a phone call from David Viera last night. Well, the Open Cape is planning a briefing for the delegation on the current status, the current and the future opportunities with Open Cape. So that would be a good thing.
Wonderful.
And very soon, yes.
Okay, then if there's something that we need to see after that, that would be good. If you know what the date of that is.
There's no date, yeah. But they're trying to see when the delegation can meet as a whole.
The other thing I think we ought to have on the agenda is on the changes of meeting places, days and times. We've talked about this informally, but I think we need to put that as an agenda item to discuss it. The idea of virtual meetings, which I brought up before, is something that is a priority of mine going forward so we could have more interaction with the community. And we need to -- I've already spoken to Mark about getting John Morse involved in this to find out what kinds of -- what we need in terms of hardware and software to do this effectively.
Yeah, I talked to John about it.
Also, the modification of the new business portion of the agenda to discuss how matters or regional concern are put on the table. I don't think we really are clear on that. That would also invite the public to come forward, to give us their thoughts. I'd like to see an agenda item where we talk about the progress of our regional services and our position on supporting funding of an office or activity of regional affairs.
Did you tell you I was going to run in a little? Oh, because you texted her.
No, she's not here.
Oh. I thought she was.
Rather than, you know, sort of casually, rather than just casually mentioning it in passing, I think we need to put it on the agenda, you know, to make sure that we're clear on exactly what we're asking for. I think that there's areas of personal concern for action for each one of you on it. And I think that I mentioned when last we met that I'd like to see us all make a submission as to the things that we think should be on the agenda so that we do that. I'd like to schedule an agenda item to discuss the operational assessment of progress. I know that we have -- we've let -- let's see, have we accepted the RFP and set up some dates?
Yeah, yeah. Actually, I think Maggie is meeting with Mark Morse on Friday morning before the MMA.
One of the things that.
Is he going to be at the MMA?
I don't think he's going to be there. I think she's going to his office first thing in the morning.
Yeah, I'd like to -- I think it would be good for us to talk to him before he starts, just to make sure we all.
Yeah, I think he plans on coming in here and talking to you guys.
Just to make sure we're all on the same page of what he's looking at. That would be great.
And that would be, you know, that would be something we should put on the agenda to make sure that we have him in and also to set, you know, set dates for him to come back and report to us what kind of progress he's making. Also, I'd like to get some progress, some understanding of the progress and the study of the feasibility of the regional assessors who are sitting moving forward. We need to get some feedback on that. And I think that we ought to talk about visiting the editorial board of the Cape Cod Times. We do have access because of the generosity of the Boncel Patriot, you know, that observes our behavior. But I think we need to talk to the editorial board to find out how we can use -- how they are able or willing to support, you know, our visibility. Then, of course, next fall, I think we should start thinking now about making presentations to boards of selectmen. And what I'm proposing, what I'd like to think about is not all three of us going, but each one of us pick an area that we'd be responsible for to make presentations so that we -- I think we could compress the amount of time that it takes.
Right.
You know, for example, on a geographic basis, you know, you might take Falmouth, Sandwich and Mashpee. I could take, you know, Boncel, Yonmouth and Dennis and then Harwich, of course. And then you could take.
Yeah, the outer towns.
Orleans down to Province Town. And that way, we would get our message out and we wouldn't have to have the logistics of all three of us going to, you know, to all of those places. But I think we ought to put that as a discussion.
Actually, I like the idea of going to all the towns.
Yeah. That's what we should talk about.
Well, it just gives us a chance to have face time with them.
And then moving on, I had sent you all a link to the Environment, Energy and Land Use Committee that, you know, that I sit on as a National Association of County Officials. And there are several items on here with regard to land use and also energy management. I have until November -- excuse me, February 2nd to propose any other resolutions on this. So I would appreciate it if you would take a look at this. The link is on the email that I sent you. And if you have any opinion as to the kinds of things that should be included as a resolution, let me know and I'll make sure that, you know, that it does get there. They have been fairly effective in the past in acting as a lobbying group to promote things. The energy, let's see, the energy block grants were something that came because we had some support from something that they had on there. And there are other things that, you know, that they're involved with. There are other committees that are there, so if you don't see something that fits the definition within this particular group, if there are other items or other areas that you think we should be, you know, be involved with, we do have access, you know, to the other ones.
Right.
I also want to.
If I may, before you jump off that subject, you might want to forward that link to Paul and Andy to see if they have.
I did. Well, I forwarded it to Paul. I didn't forward it to Andy.
Yeah, just in case they have any.
I mentioned that to him this morning.
Okay.
Okay, Andy. Lance has been in touch with us, trying to set up a meeting with Congressman Keating on February 2nd.
Okay.
Okay, at three o'clock. We had mentioned that earlier, but in any case, that's going on. And I'm told that he's on Homeland Security Committee and on Foreign Affairs. They have already made arrangements to talk to Sean O'Brien with regard to what we're doing in the REPC. I suggested to Lance that he was welcome to talk to everyone. However, I would appreciate it if he, you know, if he mentioned to you that this was going on so that you could be as helpful as we could be in order to make those visits as effective as possible. And those are the main things that I have here.
Having this conversation, well, it's reminding me that you sent me a question. It was back. It was back, probably right before Christmas or maybe right after, regarding -- I forget exactly what the question was. I have to look it up. But it had to do with wastewater and that sort of thing. And I did get an opinion and I don't know if I forwarded it to you. I'm not sure if I did, but I will. It was something that you said in the NACO resolution, they said this, and does this -- what does this have to do? I forget exactly. I'll look it up. I have my computer, so I'll forward that to you and even bring it up on the break. And we can discuss it if you wish, but I just remembered that I don't think I forwarded it back.
I know that in this committee, we do discuss wastewater management and wastewater management planning.
Yeah, and it had something to do with the TMDLs and.
Oh, okay, well.
But I'll get it too. I'll give it to you just as we're doing this. Fortunately, I have my computer with me today.
Well, in any case, those are, you know, when we get to our activities, we can all discuss that. Do you have any in the public comment?
Only that our next vegetation, and I think this is going to be our working group on the paper, is a week from Friday, which is January 28th, I believe. Is that a week from Friday? At nine o'clock, so.
Oh.
That will just be being posted today. So anyone who is here, such as the public, is now aware of that before anyone else.
There is an item.
So they can put that in the paper for me.
Piggyback on that, there is an item in here about the importance of looking at concentration of pesticides and polluting water supplies.
It might have something to do with it. I got to look up the reference that you sent me.
But in any case.
But I did have it answered.
Anything else?
To go along with that.
Go ahead.
As you -- I think I may have mentioned that the Falmouth Board of Selectmen voted. Actually, it was a tie. There were only four present, so the motion failed.
Two to two.
Two to two to vote the resolution. And of course, I made my native speech on vegetative management. And I was asked.
Thank you for joining the club.
The Martin Luther King Breakfast yesterday or the other morning, Monday morning, from someone who was there, why I voted the way I did and don't I really understand the issue and all of that. So I spent some time after the breakfast explaining the work of the committee and singling out N-Star as opposed to all the other people that probably use pesticides and they're using herbicides. And when I explained about the tank application, which is very specific to an invasive species as opposed to spraying everything, and apparently, they didn't know that. They didn't know that N-Star was doing that. So I suggested that she read the presentation that N-Star made to the town back in the spring. And so I think she's going to do that. But I told her that it's not over yet.
No, it's not.
Until the committee really makes its recommendations. But that's why we didn't want to jump on it, but to give -- and not just single out N-Star, but if there are issues, then they apply to everyone, not just N-Star.
Yeah, and we have to have a plan going forward if we want to reduce or eliminate.
So when do you expect the report?
That will be -- well, hopefully, I would like people to work on it. I put out proposed recommendations, I mean, just points of consensus and they can add, subtract, you know, whatever they want. And whatever we build consensus on is what will go forward. If we can't build consensus, then that will be stated that these points were made, but consensus wasn't gained. It is important that we -- that that report come out in a timely way so that -- because, you know, spraying will start in about a month. Right, and I want to be able to coincide that because I know that we're in talks with them as well, N-Star, about that issue and various other things. So there'll be more to report our next meeting.
Do you envision your board reconsidering that proposal?
Well, since it was two to two and the selectmen who was absent would likely have voted for the resolution, I would imagine that they will. And I think it's only fair. We said when the report comes out, we should revisit this and see if we want to support it.
Okay.
The other thing I thought in the few minutes we have, we should maybe talk about the LC3 meeting that we all attended.
Yes.
Last week. The, what is it? The local.
Local Chambers of Commerce.
Yeah.
Local Cape Cod Chambers.
Chambers of Commerce, right.
Right, that's why it's the three seats.
The other, how many, fourteen, thirteen towns? How many are a part of that local?
I believe they said twelve.
Yeah. Because they're really -- what they're really looking for is participation in some of the license plate funds to further their goals as chambers. I mean, that's what they really want to accomplish. I mean, that's a reasonable goal for them to have.
Well, I heard that.
To have funding, yeah.
But I also heard them offer that if we had particular issues that, you know, that were important to us, that they would, you know, that that could be a vehicle for us pushing it forward. And it turns out that within the last couple of, see, on the 11th of January, House Resolution 260 promoting commute less, it's in committee now at the, you know, at -- it was put in by Congressman Capiano, who used to be the mayor of Summerville. But it's an interesting proposal because it wants to, if it passes, it would require the states that are requesting federal funding for transportation projects to show how they have reduced the congestion by the use of a combination of van pools, increasing public transportation, and also involve the community of employers. They're suggesting that in this particular resolution, that they group together fifteen employers that, you know, that would represent, you know, the interest of commuting to work. Now, what, it occurred to me that this seems to be what they had suggested, which is since they, you know, since they say that they represent eight thousand employers and businesses on the Cape, that I'd like to find out if they have a transportation committee either on individual, you know, individual chambers of commerce or as a whole. And that perhaps instead of inventing or establishing a new committee, that that could be the vehicle by which, you know, we look at that. Because even if this particular bill doesn't pass, I think it's a great idea because we have problems from the mid to the lower Cape in the inland season with regard to managing congestion and looking to, let's say, ways to improve it. I also sent a similar note to Wendy Northcross, you know, so that all of the chambers, you know, have been covered. But I think this is an opportunity to basically say, okay, you've given us an invitation to participate. What do you think about this? Anyway, I just thought I could pass that on.
I have one other thing, too, is you remember Charlie Summers and Bob Lawton gave us the presentation on unfunded mandates? And that's really getting some legs, I think, in the community. There's been some discussion about it, I think, in the local media. And maybe that's something that we could.
Thank you.
Help take on as well. Because when you look at the town budgets and the difficulties they have, particularly in schools.
Yeah.
Unfunded mandates for schools.
Well, I think that we ought to put that.
Huge. I think we should put it on our agenda.
Absolutely. And I think sooner rather than later.
Right, because this is a really huge issue while the legislature is now in session or will be, or I guess they are now. And while they're in the process of filing bills, that maybe we could, we could put that on as an agenda item sometime, you know, before then, in very early February or even sometime after. That budget meeting that ends at noon?
That Monday?
Which is, no, here, on the 26th. And ends at 12:30. Maybe we could put it on for a discussion after that.
At least we could put it on for a preliminary discussion.
Yeah.
Say, you have fifteen minutes.
What our options are.
Yeah.
There's some other things to add to your list, two that were floating around. I have another list that you had sent around earlier in December. The building, kind of complex buildings committee, that was one of them. Paul, at one time, had made a comment that he wanted to make a presentation on solid waste management. So that's two others that I have to add to the list.
Well, we might need to extend our day in order to include those, but those are all important and I'd rather, you know, I'd rather start.
I don't think we're going to do all of them in one day.
No, of course not. Of course not. But I think that we need to continue to bring those up because as, you know, as the, you know, as county commissioners, we are responsible for looking at, you know, what the needs are in the region and make sure that we are at least, you know, talking about them to see whether or not we can move toward solutions. Okay, did you have anything else, Pat?
No, I don't believe it.
All right. We, let's see, we have a couple of minutes before we, unless.
I think everybody's here.
I don't think that we're missing anybody. Who's the first one up to that?
Fire training.
Since I can't, who might be first. Fire training at 9:30, right? Lee, how are you?
I'm good, thank you, Bill.
Can I ask you to do one thing before 9:30 starts? I have a request to use the Orleans Courthouse parking lot for the 13 relay event on Saturday, May 7th, 2011, from 4:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Can you please approve that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes, any abstentions? It's a vote.
They've done that. They've used that in the past as well.
Let's be at the tail end here.
Thank you.
Okay, I suppose that one, well, I suppose you could vote on the need to action because the, would you want to vote on that now?
Sure. Yeah, we could do that now.
Do you have any questions on?
Yes, I have a question on number five. It says to approve the ordinance to Chapter A.
Why don't you explain to them?
I believe this is the one where you reviewed and it is, I have a copy of it. Apparently, it was actually signed by you on December 15th, but somehow in transit, it got lost. So it is to amend ordinance 0809, the regional land use vision map in 2009, regional policy plan, and to incorporate the changes of the attached land use vision map as designated. So you actually had reviewed this before, but it never made its way over to the assembly so they've re-submitted it.
Is that?
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to.
Do you have any other questions with regard to?
No, I don't.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is it second?
Second.
Any discussion here we now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Sheila?
Aye. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Any abstentions? Sit as a vote.
Why am I having trouble finding the fire training academy? Because we have millions of people.
I know.
I have an extra copy.
That would be helpful. I have everything, it seems like, oh, here it is. I got it.
Do we have anything else before we have Lee step forward?
Lee and Mark.
Mark, how are you?
Good, Bill.
How's everything down at Eastina?
Very well.
Good, good, good.
Yep. To the Harty.
The Harty, right. Oh, is that a pun?
Yeah.
Hey, that's a cool shirt, Mark.
Thank you.
We keep saying we're going to get those.
It's got a blue fish, all right. I like that.
I'm not sure what that is.
Incident management.
Yeah, I've got a class afterwards.
We've got to get our own shirts. Well, we still have those designs, but.
Yeah, we haven't designed it. We never ordered any.
I think that's a black shirt with that, you know, with that cool colorful logo.
It's perfect.
County Commissioners. You could wear it to the next wedding you go to.
All right.
The big question was.
Many admiring glasses.
What it gets put on. That was the discussion we never had.
No, I always give them what you.
Definitely.
This goes from there. What I'll do is I'll add the.
We didn't like the options we had in terms of apparel, so I'm not sure.
Let's say, let's confine the "we" to them. I didn't care.
We like more fitted and tailor-made.
Tons of ladies apparel.
Yes, they do.
My wife has taught me that the great line is that's above my pay grade, so.
Making fashion decisions.
I learned a long time ago that that's an area you should be giving more shadow. That, taking your daughter up without school clothes, you have to say after an hour or so, does this make me look fat? If you don't answer it exactly in the right way, you've got another two hours to go. Okay.
Any questions? Mr. Chairman, could you make the introduction, please?
Okay. We are now visiting with Lee Parasol and Mark.
Bowley.
Bowley from the Fire Training Academy and we'll be discussing the Fire Training Academy So do you want to make a, give us a general overview?
Sure, absolutely.
And you don't have to go into the nitty gritty as much as where have you been, where you want to go and.
Sure. Okay. In essence, what you see is a level funded budget from last year. I did increase, I will have to do this just for explanation, I did increase the 5371 account, which is firefighting materials, about $3,000. The reason for that is the town of Summerville Water Company has installed meters on our property and they're billing us monthly. And now billing us for our water usage, which we never had before. We need to get charged a flat fee for the hydrants and a flat fee for the building. So we've gone from approximately $1,600 a year to somewhere estimated between $45 and $5,000 a year. So I increased that line by 3,000 for the water, for the hydrants, which is, we usually cover 16 out of that, so that's 46, and we'll hope that that's pretty close. And I increased the salary lines for the employees by about $1,200 to hopefully reinstate the Citizens Fire Academy, which we have to go and do under the budget cuts that we had. We'd like to do that again. Or if that doesn't go, it would at least give us the opportunity to provide one more open enrollment training class. We've gone from doing two fire and two rescue classes in both semesters, spring and fall, or excuse me, three down to two under the new curtail budgets, if you will, under reduced budgets. So in essence, it's about $1,200 less than last year's budget, even with those increases because last year, you were kind enough to give us $5,500 for the overhead doors and that low bid came in at 43, so there's some money getting turned back there. So in essence, we're about $1,200 less, depending on what Mark comes up with for workers comp and the insurance and the retirement. If those budgets don't, if those don't change drastically, we should be pretty much level funded. And we'll struggle to get through it again for another year and do the best we can with what we've got.
Sheila, do you have any questions?
I guess my question is, a lot of your measures are by number of students and programs offered.
Right.
And number of, so can we discuss that? How many students have you serviced last year and what were your programs that you offered?
I brought that with me. Well, I can do mid-year, do the mid-year report. I didn't bring last year's, I don't remember, but let's see, as of this, as of December 31st, we have seen 164 students.
From the Cape.
No, these are just for, they're just the Cape departments, 164 students. We gave, we gave that a value of.
Eighty-three.
What's that?
Eighty-three. Sorry, local.
Yes, $83,900. And we generated revenues through the first half of the year of $70,250. That's because we do most of our, our largest contract work, September through December, the revenues. The Basman job, the revenues are generated in that time period.
And the contract work being?
Contract work is for the children of the power station, for New England Maritime, and some work for the state of Fire Academy and for Mass Maritime Academy. They do come back in again. We have increased fees on some of those. One, we can't because we're still, we're in our third year, but third of a three-year contract with them. We increased the Maritime Academy.
Lee, is that number of students, say one sixty-four, is that fairly constant, do you think, compared with previous years, or what you might expect?
It has gone down.
It has gone down.
It has gone down. I would use, I would normally see somewhere in that area of two to three hundred, but it's gone down for two reasons. One, we're not offering as many programs due to budget decreases, and the, the need for the ICS training has diminished as everybody has gotten it, and now we're just doing re-qualifications or recertifications, or new people coming into the system and getting those classes, so those are smaller classes than what they were.
Could I ask a question about that? I, I had felt that the ICS training is very important for elected officials.
Could we say with ICS?
In the command system.
Okay, just so everybody knows.
The command system. Yeah, and that's the, in order to qualify for federal funding for a lot of the homeland security activities, we have to show that we have people who are qualified in the understanding of, you know, the ICS system. When I went down to Anniston, two years ago, one of the things that they noted was a very, they, I think I was like the, only the third elected official that ever got the training on it, and although I would not want to encourage an ICS manager to be an elected official, I think it's important for, you know, for the elected officials on Cape Cod to be aware of what, of what an ICS, what the ICS system is, so that they can know how to be helpful and how to, let's say, act, in my opinion, act as a buffer for the people that are doing the work, but, you know, in order to make sure that we, you know, that we do what the system is intended to do. So, when you mentioned in, in your budget, you talked about reaching out to municipal, I'm hoping that that would be part of it, and, and, you know, perhaps offer one that would be a, what I'd call a summary kind of a course, that either could be offered, let's say, on a one-day basis, or perhaps on a, like a correspondence basis, that would, would bring people that are, you know, that are elected to serve up the speed as to what the system is.
We have, we have touched all the towns on the Cape, and we have had all those people in, in classes. We've gone to them and their communities, and we've had, not necessarily all the elected officials, but town administrators, maybe not the selectmen, whatever, they've all been invited, and they've all been offered those courses, and some chose to and some didn't, but in the communities, all of the directors of different departments in each town, the heads of the departments, and some of their, their understudies, if you would, and the town administrators have gone through these, these programs, so they are...
I think, I think that's important for people to be aware of, that, you know, that within, you know, within the community, you know, staff, you know, has taken advantage of these programs. However, you know, the, the point is that, that when, when people elect, you know, the leadership in the towns, I, I guess I would encourage you to continue to offer it to...
There's a, there's a specific course for elected officials.
Yes, I know.
We've done, I would, I would say probably two or three times over the past four, five years. The, the problem is, you know, you well know, having a day to set aside for that type of training is a little bit difficult to get enough people in one room, so. It is out there, it's available, we're certainly willing to do it for anybody that asks for it, we'll do it for any class size, we'll do it one-on-one if we need to, that's not a problem, but having the opportunity on your side of the fence is, sounds like more the problem than, than the offering.
Well, I'm going to suggest that, that perhaps this might be a place to think about using some sort of a virtual, you know, you know, classroom, you know, we've got all this technology, and perhaps that might be one way to approach some of it, at least the administrative portion of it.
The problem is, it's a, it's a, it's a hands-on course, you have to sit down and interact with one another, and you can't do that over a web-based course, you have to actually sit down and...
Can you compress it to like maybe an hour, or two hours, or we're two different?
To get the, to get the FEMA certificate, we have to stay at a standard, and the standard requires, we can do it in about six or seven hours.
Well, in any, in any case, keep, you know, keep the flag up and...
Oh, yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
I just wanted to mention that that one sixty-four is generally people who have come to the academy. There are, there are, there are other numbers that we don't necessarily capture the entire number when we go out to a department, or we do some ICS trainings, especially for, for non-fire department personnel. We've done a number of courses for the Red Cross and for the DOT team, and for some other of these social service or NGOs, non-governmental organizations, and we don't necessarily capture all of those folks and their numbers completely, because we're, we're sending one of our staff to do the training, but then they are, some of them are going online and completing the tests and getting their certificate that way, rather than complicating the, the process by us doing the certificate and mailing it in and waiting six or eight months for FEMA to get back to them. So some of those people aren't totally captured in the numbers, so you know that.
Boards of health included that, and health inspectors?
Yeah, yeah. And I will say that the Cape, and I haven't got anything to substantiate this in writing, but I know from, 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 you know, being around, that the Cape, and because of our efforts, we are the most compliant in the state, there's no question about that. There's no town on the, on the Cape that isn't compliant with NIMS, the National Incident Management System that you sign off on for your grants and all of that, because of what we've been able to do. On the other side of the bridge, they have a hard time getting the classes offered, they have a hard time getting legitimate classes offered in terms of, I say legitimate, in terms of real qualified professional instructors with a background to be able to do that. So they have a hard time doing it. So we are, on the Cape, the most qualified in the state, I have no problem saying that.
Well, I, I was very encouraged to hear that Congressman Keating has, has been picked for the Homeland Security Committee, and I, and we've already, I've already reached out through, you know, through Lance to invite him to find out more about it, and they've set up an appointment with Sean, with Sean O'Brien, and as part of that, I think we probably, you know, you know, would be involved. I think it's important that, you know, that in this particular area and for the security of people that live down here, they, you know, they should be aware that, you know, that the nuclear system is indeed taking, you know, taking an interest in that.
We have, we have the only recognized incident management team in the state also, which is, which is, you know, pretty special to us.
Special to me.
And that's totally based on what the academy and the county as a governing board has been able to accomplish, otherwise we wouldn't be able to do this, so.
How does the ICS training relate to someone or a group of people that have to manage an EOPS center?
It's, it's critical, because they, they need to know how the whole thing integrates.
Emergency Operations Center.
Emergency Operations Center, how they integrate with the field, and how they integrate with MIMA or FEMA for, for resource ordering and resource gathering. So it's critical, and this, there are particular courses for Emergency Operations Center staff that we offer for those folks, so that they're more comfortable in their roles and positions when they're in there. The, the Emergency Operations Center should serve as a coordination and policy center, not necessarily a command and control center. Sometimes we, we gray the line just because of numbers of people available, but that's really what it should be, and we've done a few of those, and people are getting more comfortable in, in what the particular roles are and what they should be, so it's been, it's been effective, and I think we, we've done a good job in that outreach. Need a little more work.
There's a lot of tabletop exercises that you've done, and I think you've done a couple of simulations over the last couple of years, and I think, you know, we've all learned a lot from, you know, from when you run those.
You were saying that you have revenues generated from your work. Can you say what those revenues were again?
Seventy thousand.
Yeah, that's, it's on the sheet. I think you have the...
The actual number, so they don't have...
Oh, they don't, okay.
Eighty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah, I would like to see where your revenues are and how you generate those.
The actual revenues, which, which the part, where they're from?
Yeah, I mean, how, how you're generating, I know that you're generating, you just said from the academy.
We generate, we generate sixty-two thousand dollars by contract from children of the power station for their annual requalification, that's our largest, and this is the, to be entering in this coming September when we start, that will be the end of our three-year contract with them, which will be renewed as long as they are still up and running and functioning.
Right. And then your other sources?
Any other sources? New England Maritime is a, is a program that generates approximately ten to fifteen thousand dollars a year, depending on the number of students that he gets, and how many of them we do the training for.
So that represents half of the year.
And, and so, and really, all the monies you have for the, for these activities is what the county has, so like what we have is thirty-three, three thirty-three last year, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, and plus, plus you got, plus you were able to generate the seventy thousand on top of that?
That's for half a year.
For half a year?
And we have, and we will have more coming from New England Maritime, because he's, he's, he is year-round, usually two, two programs in the spring, two, two programs in the fall, like two programs in the spring.
Okay. And where do those monies go? I mean, I don't see...
The general fund, everything goes to the general fund.
Okay, and how much do you have in your general fund?
I don't see, I did, your general fund is not mine.
Okay, so it goes to our general fund?
We don't have an offset or any...
Offset, okay.
We have no offset.
Great, I'll share.
And, so, so the only thing I would like is just to see the overall year, not just a half a year, of both revenue and expenditure.
That report was generated at the end of the year in...
About two thousand and ten, yeah, we have last year's.
It was, it was out and disseminated, so it's around somewhere.
Okay.
If you need one specifically, I will get you one.
Well, I can, I think I have a copy of it.
Okay, Mark, hold that to us.
And that breaks down where the revenues came from, and I believe it does.
Yeah. It does.
Do you have any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay, then I have one, one, first of all, I want to say that how much do we all appreciate the hard, good work that you, you folks do?
Thank you.
Personally, and I think the other commissioner shared this, we're very proud of this operation, and it, and indeed is something that we, you know, we all tell everybody that we can. I know that when I, you know, when I went to the visit to the Senate for Domestic Preparedness, you described what our Fire Academy does, what our Regional Emergency Planning Committee do, they, you know, they were overwhelmed, because they, a lot of them across the country is basically just sort of getting started and looking for the kind of, say, the kind of integrated activity, you know, that we have, and all this to do with kind of people we have working in there, so I wanted to say how much we, you know, how much we appreciate all of that. And going forward, Lee, what would be the, what would be the thing that you would most like to see happen in the next year?
I would most like to see happen, an ability to, to reach more students again, like we used to, and unfortunately, that, that means money, and that is, because all of the local departments have, their budgets have been cut so drastically, they have no money for training, they have no money for, to offset sending students to us and backfilling their stations or, or...
I wonder if people realize that when, you know, when somebody from, you know, from public safety goes to an operation or goes to a training, that there's still a need for covering the duties of that person, they don't have extra staff, so to speak.
Unless they can come on their off-duty time, which if they, if they do, that, you know, they can if this course happens to fall off-duty. Sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't, and it just makes it very difficult for them, so what's easier to solve that issue is for us, which we used to do quite a bit of, and we've done a lot less of it this year and last year, is actually go to them, bring in a prepared program, a prepared course, and go to the station and teach that class before six hours during the day, and, or schedule it as a four-hour class, and it probably ends up being six or seven by the time they do runs in between and get back and run it in and all that stuff, but generally, it takes us a day to, in general, you know, one staff member or two, depending on the program, to go out and do that. We're doing, we happen to be doing an awful lot of that for Provincetown this year. They've asked us to come out and give them a lot of programs, pretty much one a month for the next six months.
Now, Provincetown is pretty much volunteer.
Yes, they are, and, and the chief recognizes they're, they're lacking in some of the newer techniques, the newer operations in ICS, and they do rapid intervention training and stuff like that, so we're, we're reaching out to them, because it's very difficult for them to get up here. Those people are all volunteers, and they work jobs, or they try to, you know, and so that's, they're getting the brunt of our ability to go to the outside and teach classes this spring. We are, we do have, and I like to mention, we do have coming up now the recruit class, the firefighter one-two class, which usually run, we have previously run in the fall. We've scheduled it now for the spring, because the fall was so busy, that we were having staff problems, getting enough people to be involved with all the classes going on. That class is going to, it's starting February, and it has forty students. We had to cut it off at forty, that's the largest we've ever done, that's the maximum we can hold. That will be a major expenditure on our part to give those forty students their recruit training classes, so that will be, majority of our salary monies will be going to that program starting in February. We have enough to do a couple of smaller open enrollment programs, none of the four-day stuff, none of the five-day stuff, but some of the one-to-two-day stuff. Some of those do generate revenues, because the off-Cape people pay us a hundred dollars a day to come, and the kind of, kind of splits, it's usually half and half, if we have twenty students in the class, it's usually about ten from our Cape and...
If you're going to the end of the Cape, you know, there are three towns that so-called cluster together, do you make Turo and Wealthly aware that, you know, that you're teaching in Provincetown?
Some programs, they work together, and we either teach in Provincetown or Turo, Wealthly, or even Eastham, as a, as a program for all of them to come to, and they'll find a central location, which is good for them. We're going to be doing a pump operators class, that we've historically held at our facility or somewhere up on the upper Cape, and we're going to do one sponsored by Eastham, down in Eastham this spring, that's one of the programs we're going to do, which is a two-day pump operators class, so a lot of these new people who do not, really don't understand what a fire pump does and how it works, get that training under their belt, and that's, that's always a...
The problem on the local side, as you're well aware, is that, you know, one of the first places that you have to cut, because it's, is it's expendable, but it's the place where there is some of the money, is in training.
Well, that after maintenance.
Well, both, yeah, so, I mean, we've, just as an example, we, we asked for monies for, for live-fire training for our folks, and we, there's no money for that. Well, you know, that's the case around the Cape, and that becomes critical, I mean, it really does, and, and if we didn't exist, the folks who are coming to us now wouldn't be able to do that either, because they'd have nowhere to go, or the expense would be so astronomical that they couldn't do it. And people in general don't understand the critical nature of the training that's, that's missing throughout police, fire, and everyone else, and the other thing they don't understand is completely, is having this local resource is a huge savings to them to be able to accomplish the training that they are accomplishing. If they had to do it somewhere else, it would, it would triple and quadruple the costs, if they could even do it, so, you know, we just...
It's a long trip to Sudbury.
Well, there's not, there's not, and the state is, the state is generally tied up with, with scheduled courses for recruit training, those types of things, there aren't a lot of open classes to go to even, you know, because it just isn't, they don't have the budget either, their budget's been slashed and cut, so they don't have the open classes either, so really, there is no place to go, other than finding out-of-state places, things like that, so it's critical.
So, so for students here that are on the Cape, and they attend courses that are, are offered here, those are generally free to them, for Cape residents?
Free in terms that we don't charge them.
We don't charge them, I, I understand, so, but if they were to, if it didn't exist here, and they were going to go to Sudbury or wherever it's being held, what is the general cost of those? I know that there's transportation cost and maybe an overnight, but what is the, the program cost?
If there was a program available to them at the state level, the tuition fee again is zero, the state doesn't charge a tuition fee generally, on most courses, some they do. The cost would be involved with sending the person there, accommodations, and whatever contractual obligations you have to that employee, plus the backfill and the overtime when that person has gone, generally.
And on the contract, it basically says that they, that training is going to be provided on an ongoing basis, and these things are, you know, it takes...
Depends, they're all different.
Okay.
Okay.
Just one other thing I'd like to mention, if I could, we're in the, because we do try to work well with the other agencies, as you know, we work real well with Sean, and I'd like just to mention that, that between Sean O'Brien and Mark Foley, they instituted and got off the ground and got this whole ICS and NIM system going, and they are the backbone of it, and without them, it would never have happened, and I think it deserves credit, but those two guys have worked exceptionally hard on it.
that person has gone generally.
And on the contract, it basically says that they, that training is going to be provided on an ongoing basis, and these things are, you know, it takes it.
Depends on, they're all different.
Okay.
Just one other thing I'd like to mention, if I could. We're in the, because we do try to work well with the other agencies, as you know, we do real well with Sean. And I'd like just to mention that, that between Sean O'Brien and Mark Foley, they instituted and got off the ground and got this whole ICS and NIMS system going, and they are the backbone of it, and without them, it would never have happened. And I think they deserve credit for that, both those two guys have worked exceptionally hard on it.
And by the way, while, while we're on it, I think people have to listen to what Mark has said about, you know, about the need of bringing up the skill level of folks that are here, because one of the things that we haven't addressed, and there's a tie-in with, you know, with the competitive extension grants that we've given for land management to put fire breaks in, is that we have successfully dodged the bullet with regard to wildfires, you know, here on the Cape, especially with more and more land going into contamination. So I think that that's another need for people to recognize, that without this training, you know, we're putting more and more people. I'm sorry.
Well, I just wanted to say too, I think the fire training academy is a model of regionalizing services on the Cape. I mean, you've been here a while, and we can't forget the fact that when we look to models, we have one right here that has been very, very successful, that has revenues, that supports mostly its services, and it provides absolute needed services for people in fire departments, so.
Thank you.
Great to you.
What you see in front of you is a modular constructed fire training and rescue tower. We are in the process of writing a grant, Phil, Phil was writing a grant for us. That is a, so one of the, one of the back pages is actually a different kind of a top that goes on there. That is the top of the tower for repelling, for cage ladderways, for free-fall repelling once the wall repels.
Repelling against a firewall, that scares the crap out of me.
Inside of, inside of that building, there's a built-in maze that is changeable, and there's a whole bunch of things in there. And it has a breach prop to break any netting and getting into the buildings. It has two, we will have two burn chambers in it that are insulated and have stainless steel walls, and you just generate heat and smoke through the building. We're looking at a grant somewhere between three hundred and fifty and four hundred thousand dollars, and it's an outright grant with no expenditures in the county. Phil seems to think there's a good shot at it, the money's out there for those kind of things. That one happens to be in Alabama. I believe that one there was in Alabama, the company, this particular company's out of Florida. That's in Alabama, and it did not cost them a penny.
Well, the fact that our new congressman has shown an interest in this particular area, you know, we ought to enlist his, you know, his support for this.
So that's, that's, that's what we're working on for this year, and if you've been out to this facility, you know the four telephone pole rope tower is now, that would sit in that existing place.
Okay.
So, and we've already applied to the FAA, federal, the federal, the FAA and the.
Talking with the FAA.
The Department of Aeronautics.
Federal Aeronautics Administration.
Because we're within the airport runways and landing areas.
Because we're looking at four feet higher than the highest place that we sit right now. They don't believe it's an issue. The only issue might be, we might have to put a blinking red light on it. If they, if they crash into that building, they're already down.
You don't have any neighbors in Marytown, do you?
Well, they've hit the, actually, we do, down the street.
Down the street, yeah.
There's one house way back in.
Commercial.
That's been there for a while.
Commercial.
There's some commercial properties.
Make sure you talk to them.
I wanted to mention too, our insurance carrier, MYO, Massachusetts Center Local Insurance Association. They are really putting a lot more of their efforts into prevention and training, and they contacted me only because I'm local, I guess, and I'm on their board, that they want to, they've been trying to do some driver training for police and fire at the base, and they've had, been having a difficult time doing that. So I've kind of wormed my way through the base infrastructure to see if that's not a possibility. And I know that they provide the space for state police, but being able to provide it locally, and that's not only for the Cape, but for Plymouth, you know, Marshville, towns like that. So I'm working on that, and hopefully that will, that will come about, because it's the Coast Guard now that's in charge. It used to be when the Hundred and Second was here, you know, the base commander was the commander of the Hundred and Second, well, now it's the Coast Guard. And they're, they, they really see as part of their mission is to help public safety. So hopefully that, that will come about, so I can.
The instructor that works at Kenny Jones, who used to be on High and Federal, he's a professional driving instructor. He came to see me at the Fire Academy one day, because they were in a jam, because they had a place scheduled in Plymouth or something, and then he couldn't use it. And he was looking for an, an optional place to be able to run the course, and he came down and looked at it, and we did not have a facility with a parking area large enough for them to do what they have to do with fire apparatus, so we were, we were, we were out of the thing. I was more than willing, it's like, yeah, absolutely, because we've got a lot of people that can do that.
Yeah. Well, they have an area called the Christmas tree. You know, it was a whole bunch of airstrips that are not used.
Yeah, they've got, they've got.
And they have some other space over there too, but the Coast Guard seems to be fairly willing to work with us on it.
And I might mention that Pat has been gracious and generous enough to step up and be the liaison to, you know, to the fire chiefs as well as the RAPC.
Oh, yeah.
Please keep her on, you know, on board.
I do have a couple of questions.
We do?
Yeah, I do. How's the overhead door project going?
It is done, completed.
Excellent.
Came out real well.
Can you advise the chief and family how to get an overhead door?
Help the building stay a lot warmer.
A new one or a old one?
The wind's gone, and we have also the center section, we've done it, just finished that the other day, the center section between those doors, it was just fiberglass, two pieces of fiberglass, and all the windows in the place were like that. Over the years, we've replaced a lot of the windows, and because they're eight-inch walls, we replaced that with an eight-inch wall, fully insulated, and a sliding door unit. It's double, triple insulated glass, whatever, and we put that up in there for light, so we still have light in the facility, but we now have insulated that whole end wall.
It's made a big difference, all right.
That's helped a lot. And we've got the two in the bathrooms to do, we've got the windows that have been donated to us, the supplies, materials, all donated to us, the matter bunch is doing it. Rip the other one out and stick the other one out for our two days' work.
You want to mention by who donated?
Shepley, it's all the.
Shepley's been very generous, smart.
Yes, they have. And the stuff that we've donated, that was donated to us quite some time ago, and we've just kept it stockpiled and kept the doors and stuff like that and windows, in container boxes to keep them, you know, in good shape until we had to use for them.
Lee, thank you very much for coming.
I'm not, I'm not. The burn billing, how is that? We're going on close to fifteen years old.
That was, we were fortunate enough to have an engineer that works for, or is a member of the task force, the.
RAPC?
No, the Mass Task Force.
The Mass Urban Search and Rescue.
Urban Search and Rescue Team, Mass was just Task Force One, Beverly. He was kind enough to come down and do an engineering survey for us at no cost the first time, and he found it was structurally sound, a few little points, we had to just point up a couple of bricks, it just kind of popped because of the blocks, because of the moisture, but structurally the building is sound, and you see no reason why it can't continue being used.
The interior, as you know, we've been work, worked on over the years and kind of keep it clean, maintained, so it's been a good trip.
And I want to go back to Ken Sheila's point. You had mentioned something, Mark, about the ICS and how, you know, we got our act together here on this side of the bridge, but on the other side of the bridge, they're really having trouble kind of formulating classes. Is there a revenue opportunity for us to be doing something over there and share our knowledge for a price?
Yeah, I would say, I would say that, that there is that opportunity.
And what would it take to build that?
Well, two, I'll say two things. They have a free opportunity that they're not taking advantage of now, so I'm not sure that they'll take advantage of cost opportunity and the travel over to here. We, we could go over there, it wouldn't be a problem. The, there isn't, wouldn't be a large expense on our side, it's basically instructor costs and some materials, not a lot. We could look into that, I'm just not sure that there's, there's a, a market for it. There are lots of private companies out there that are doing it, but mostly for private organizations and not for governmental organizations, and they're doing well.
We have to be careful about, you know, let's say about competing with the private sector.
Well, that's true too. I mean, we don't, we obviously don't want.
Well, what's the free opportunity?
Well, me, me, my mass, mass emergency management agency does offer these classes, but they offer them in such limited quantities that it's difficult to get into, and again, they have to travel some distance.
Or get to France or whatever.